Joining us soon, but in the meantime, you got me. So, as I always say, go easy. Thank you. Let's start with roll call.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Foyce?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here. Would you join me, please, in a moment, a prayer of silence, contemplating our actions today? Okay, please join me as Jamie Knudsen releases our pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Schmidt?
Madam Mayor, pro temp, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also approval of minutes of the February 4th, 2019, regular session as proposed.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we've come to the time on our agenda where we're open to oral presentations, where we get to hear from our citizens on issues of interest that are not on tonight's actual agenda. So, anyone who wants to be first?
And I'll just note, we did have two individuals call in for five minutes, but it'll be for item number nine on the agenda.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, who wants to come forward?
David Drier, 3145 West Forest Street. Had this question on my mind for some time, but when we have unexpected expenses come up, where do they get paid from? And in particular, I just heard Chief Falca talk about that, I guess he has a little pot out there that he can use for $10,000 to bolster the police department. So, when we have a water main break that wasn't necessarily figured into the budget, or some other event that happens, where does that money come from? Because they maybe don't have a pot out there. Does it get transferred from another department to bolster their department, or how's that happen?
Yes. Michelle, would you like to answer that, please? Thank you.
Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer. Those will be paid from any variety of sources. We do expect our departments to manage to cover some unexpected things. If they're very large expenditure, typically that they would hopefully be able to do that out of existing bond money that they might have. Sometimes you just saw us approve a budget amendment today for Ridgeway Towers to use some of their fund balance to replace a hot water heater at Ridgeway Towers. So, we try very hard not to use fund balance. That is our last resort, but it just depends on what that department, what funds they have available to them.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Pro Temp, members of the council. I'm Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. Last week, we amended some development agreements. These development agreements, is my understanding, they will be $5,000 available for each and every house that is built, but it was not mentioned how many houses there were. And so, we don't have any idea of how many dollars it will cost. Where do these funds come from? Do they come out of a 657A account? 657A was mentioned last week at that meeting. Is there a special account for 657A? So, if we take 5,000 per house for 10 or 20 houses, I have no idea how many. What will happen to the teardowns of the 657A houses? We have them sitting out there, these properties, for years and years before they get tore down. So, if we start taking $5,000 for every house that people build, what will happen? And this money, is this available just for one or two people? Or can any citizen who has a lot, an infill lot, can they get that $5,000? Or is this just restricted to a few developers? Those are the questions.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to the mayor now that he's here. Thank you.
All right, Noel. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, for the project we just approved, I think it was, I don't have that, I apologize, I don't have that information with me. I think it was three to five houses remaining on that area that we approved that specific development agreement for. The sale of property policy does have two divisions to it, the regular portion and the 657A. They're both written to where they can go to either side, so you can utilize either portion of the policy wording for any type of property the city sells. We have seen a lot of success recently utilizing the 657A portion of the policy, whereas we give $5,000 upon a certificate of occupancy. Currently, that is for the sale of city property, 657A property or other property in the case of the example given. That was a former Francis Grouse School Building that the city had acquired. I think we had eight lots out of that development. A couple houses have been built. This will bring more houses to that site. So, that is available for anyone that wants to buy city-owned property and utilize that. They can request that through a development agreement. The example of the houses on Madison and Monroe, they pay about $2,000 a year in taxes, so we will see a return on that fairly quickly in about two and a half years. If you figure that they'd utilize the CLURA and have three years of tax abatement, so then we're looking at, you know, about five and a half years. But again, that's a quick return. Immediately, we're going to see new population, new residents going in there. We have had some preliminary discussions on expanding that sale of property policy to potentially include infill lots in general, meaning that someone that would own private property could come to the city of Waterloo and ask for a development agreement to where, again, upon the completion of a finished house, we would give $5,000 to help for that infill development. The reason why the city is pushing to see this is infill development is obviously very fruitful to the city of Waterloo, very helpful in terms of creating a higher density in existing neighborhoods where we do not have to put in new roads, new streets, new water, new sewer, infrastructure, et cetera. So, it's very much a good thing for the city of Waterloo to help grow as well as put new investment in these older neighborhoods. All right, thank you, Noel.
And the money comes from what fund?
Sorry?
That was one other question.
And so, and as many of you recently, we just talked about, as we're moving ahead with the capital improvements program, so we've been utilizing some bond funds that we have demolition, but they're also available for housing assistance, and we take the funds out of there. The reason we put that funding source or that bond source together is that way, we have a little bit of flexibility in terms of whether or not we're going to demolish these dilapidated houses, or if we can get someone to come along and save them, then we can use the money to help save those houses. So, that flexibility has helped us with a lot of infill housing.
Noel, can you answer a question for me?
Yes, sir.
The, the, there's also another portion of the 657A dilapidated houses, too, just so the listening audience will also know. Can you tell us about that part of the program? About the, you bid on a house and then you get some return? Can you?
So, the 657A policy, as it is stated right now, as we come, as we would take a house, we generally have the building department and our other staff look at it to see if the house is savable. If it potentially is, then we usually send out a request for proposals. So, it's not a strict bid where you're bidding on just a monetary amount, but it's a proposal to where you're talking about what investment you're going to put into it, what kind of a timeline you're going to put into it to really rehabilitate these houses. With that program, generally, we have it where there's $5,000 paid minimum. Sometimes we, there is a bidding process involved in the RFP process because the house is worth more. I think we just sold one recently for about $27,000, if I remember right. But again, at the end of that, they would get their 5,000 back minimum, and then they get another $5,000 for that investment in the infill area.
And I think part of the goal is to make sure, in having conversations with, you know, the folks across the street at the county and taking a look at the areas within our city, some of the areas that need some of the most support, this is an opportunity for us to help with home ownership, also build up an existing house in an area that's desperately in need of some support. So, thank you, Noel. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Mayor, hi council. Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. After last week's meeting, I did talk to the lady on Williston that did have the water problem, and she did get a call from the insurance company, said that it was denied, that the information came from the city, who never once stopped and looked down the hole to find out what the problem was. My opinion was that if she had a problem and they wanted a true, I mean, an answer what was going on, they should have talked to the plumber that was in the hole and got the information from him. He was down the hole, not the person they got the information from. So, I think that that lady was treated wrong. So, that's my opinion.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Yes, sir.
I'm Jose Cotroson, if you can bring me a spaniel. Now, why can't bring me a spaniel? Well, I'm Mr. Joseph Hart, then. In my neighborhood, they asked that I meet with the council to present several concerns. The first one is break-ins in my neighborhood. And maybe I can direct this to the chief. 404th Street and that area, Charles Street and Oliver Street. In fact, we had two this week there on Oliver. And I would like to know if there's anything we can do to resolve this problem.
I will come see you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hart, what's your, what's your address?
My other concern is snow removal. And my neighborhood seem like that's a lack in removing snow. In fact, wasn't anything done today. Is that a reason why?
Yes, Mr. Hart, there's a snow removal policy that was adopted. I think it has to be, what, three inches? Worth of snow has to be on ground before we fully send crews out. We salt and sand throughout the day, but in residential areas, it's three inches.
My other concern is years pass, they would have cars that move to one side while they clean the other side. That is not in effect anymore. Is that a reason why?
So, do we, we don't, we haven't done that? No, we haven't done that. But what do we do for cars if they're on the sides of the road? Do we just plow around them? Or if it's downtown, is there some type of policy?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent of Traffic. We just go around cars in residential neighborhoods unless they are on a snow route. And if they're on a snow route, then once we have a snow emergency, all vehicles have to be removed from the street on those routes. But in residential neighborhoods, we just go around the cars if they don't move them. We don't, we don't do odd even sides.
Okay, thank you. One more, if I may. Speed bumps. Who do I contact to give speed bumps in my area?
You can talk to Ms. Greco.
Sandy Greco, I guess my title's changed, Traffic Operations Director. If you would notify our office, we will send you a petition. And once that is signed by two-thirds of the people in your block where you're concerned, we will set up our speed study and commit and do a speed study and then send you the results. If it does qualify, I will bring the recommendation back to the council and the speed hump will be installed. So, if you contact our office, we'll, we'll send one out to you.
So, Mr. Hart, when you give the chief your information, he can forward it on to Mrs. Greco, and then she can contact you about the speed bump. And I need your address for the record.
The address?
I need your address for the record.
404th Street.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
All right, and thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time.
Okay, make a motion to close hearing, receive the comments, and place on file.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Okay, make a motion on the consent agenda to receive, place on file, and prove with the addition of the dollar amount in 1A1
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is Mr. Peterson, Peterson here, will not be present, but he's been appointed to the Memorial Hall Commission, so we thank him for his service. Someone take number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing in add for the 2018 remedial actions phase 3B, contract number 949.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against, or have questions about this particular item? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to adopt a resolution, authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Our estimate was $535,314. Our first bidder was V Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $746,124.90. Second bidder was Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $520,649.23.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding contract to Lodge Construction of Clarksville, Iowa, in the amount of $520,649.23 in conjunction with the 2018 remedial actions phase 3B, contract number 949, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please. Mr. Morris, number three?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing in add for fiscal year 2019 CIP pipelining phase 3C, contract number 962. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. I'm sorry if I'm moving a little bit rapidly, not with public comments, but it's an absolute blizzard outside right now, and visibility is down very low, so.
So, we're almost spending the night here?
No.
Well, you don't have to go, you don't have to go home, but you have to get out of here. All right, so, is there anyone that has comments on these, on this particular item? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing to proceed. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Our estimate was $452,467. First bidder was Instuform Technologies USA LLC of Chesterfield, Missouri. Their bid amount, or they provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $474,369.60. Second bidder was HydroClean of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $402,210.90. Third bidder was SAC Construction of O'Fallon, Missouri. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $443,437.70. Fourth bidder was Municipal Pipe and Tool Company LLC of Hudson, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $377,252.75. Final bidder was Visu Sewer Incorporated of Pawaki, Wisconsin. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $397,558.
How much was that?
$397,558 for the last one.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding contract to Municipal Pipe Tool Company LLC of Hudson, Iowa, in an amount of $377,252.75 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2019 CIP pipelining phase 3C, contract number 962, and approving the contract bonds and a certificate of insurance and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make note of the fact that in number two and number three, we accepted bids that were under the estimated cost of about $100,000 with both of those together. So, way to go.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mrs. Jewen?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request by Michael Maloney to rezone 1.55 acres from R1, one and two-family residence district to C2, commercial district, to allow for the use of the property as a landscaping business, including the construction of a 60-foot by 72-foot pole building with office space for the relocation of an existing landscaping business located 45 East Airline Highway.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the planning program and zoning commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending. Ordinance number 5079 is amended city water zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone of certain property located at 45 East Airline Highway.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Noel, anything?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I'm not aware if there's a hurry. Mr. Maloney is here to, is there a hurry in trying to move ahead with this for purchase or anything like that, or?
Michael Maloney, 45 Airline Highway. There's not a huge hurry. We are trying to build that building sooner than later, so I guess the sooner we can get things rolling, the better. But, I mean, if we need to pause for a little bit, that's fine.
All right, yeah, we just, maybe, folks just want to know if there's need to get something done right away, abstracting or whatever it is. You know, council takes heed to that, but if you have a little time, I'd like to work the process a little bit. So, thank you, thank you, sir.
You bet.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, it didn't fail. We'll be back next week. All right, thank you. All right, could someone take, uh, five, uh, do all three of those, if you will?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number five is adopting a resolution approving requests to release revisionary rights pertaining to a development agreement with Nerman and Menola Wacoanovic for the construction of a residential building addition and conveyance of a portion of a public alley located at fourteen oh nine West Eleventh Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Next is adopting a resolution approving the award of asbestos survey services contract in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred dollars to Hawkeye Environmental of Soul and Iowa for properties located at twenty-one, twenty-seven, eighth, East Fourth Street, rectory only, four nineteen Lane Street, eight hundred West Second Street, six fourteen West Seventh Street, five thirty-six Dawson Street, six twenty-three West Second Street, four eleven East Eighth Street, three twenty-eight West Fourteenth Street, twelve eleven Sycamore Street, fourteen twenty Commercial Street, fourteen twenty-two Commercial Street, fourteen twenty-six Commercial Street, fourteen thirty Commercial Street, four twenty-one Logan Avenue, and one fifty-four Harrison Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And finally, adopting a resolution approving a joint project agreement with the city of Cedar Falls for reconstruction and maintenance of the intersection of University Avenue and Midway Drive, and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions about these three items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just had a question about number seven. Uh, in the attachments, it talks about, um, uh, the cost sharing. Cedar Falls, uh, is, uh, estimated cost is two hundred and fifty-three thousand, and I wanted to see what the estimated cost for Waterloo's, uh, portion of that.
All right, thank you.
Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer. Uh, on that same attachment there, Mr. Morrissey, the city's portion is about seven hundred and three thousand. The reason it's so much more between Cedar Falls and Waterloo is our seven hundred thousand dollar estimate includes the left turn lane on University at Midway. Cedar Falls has already completed their left turn lane and their portion of their city, so, um, when you look at Exhibit A in the agreement, anything uh, west of the city limits, Cedar Falls will pay for, and everything to the east of the city limits, Waterloo will pay for.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, five, six, and seven?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the second time, and ordinance amending ordinance number five zero seven nine is amended the city water zoning ordinance regulating the sale of fireworks.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, I think we have, uh, two people signed up. Um, first, uh, we'll go to, uh, Mike Goings, and then someone else has. God, there we go again. All right, uh, any questions on this particular item? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
All right, thank you. Number nine, finally.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the second time, and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Waterloo, Iowa by amending section thirteen, fireworks of chapter two, general offenses of title five police regulations.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the second. Uh, Mr. Goings?
Mr. Mayor, Mike Goings, twelve oh three West Second Street. Once again, I stand before you not only for myself, but for those for whatever reason can't speak for themselves. I would like to start off by saying that after what was said about the police officers after I spoke last week, I want to make it clear that in no way were my comments meant to be construed as disparaging towards police officers. Even though some people would like them to be robots, I understand more than a lot of people that police officers are human. I'd also like to thank Mr. Amos for trying the July Fourth compromise. Appreciate that much. Um, and to clarify, the, uh, Des Moines proper started out with the later time, but they now ban it completely. Um, there's some of the surrounding cities that still have the limited times. I need to clarify some things you heard last week from the gentleman that spoke after I did. He wasn't just any old business owner expressing his opinion as portrayed. Some of you know who he is, but I think it stands to reason that need to make sure that all council members know that he has a financial, uh, financial stand in your decision-making as the co-owner of Crossroads Fireworks. Um, as a proponent of fireworks, he tried to minimize the impact of fireworks. In talking about the three-day window, twice he used the term confines the disruption. Fireworks aren't a disruption like a salesman calling during suppertime. It's our mental and physical health and well-being involved. You also heard him try to minimize us by using the term a few folks affected, and implying we are up here trying to tug at your heartstrings to get the ordinance changed. Mrs. Thornsberry and I have been in front of you several times to add to a meaningful discussion and to educate counsel on what her nephew goes through and how my PTSD relates to fireworks usage. Over the multiple fireworks discussions, many others have also spoken, called in, sent in emails about how their families are negative affect, negatively affected. You heard the setup for a future argument to keep fireworks legal. When it was mentioned that citizens that, that want to do it legally will only do it during the legal days, and only, and the others are the concerns, and will be lighting them off outside the legal days. He knew as well as, as all of us know, that there's no way we're going to be able to tell who's lighting them off illegally, whether it's be the ones that favor the fireworks or not. Um, and my final point, uh, with him, with what was told to you guys, he said that he didn't like dogs barking. Living in Hudson, he has ordinance fifty-five point eight he can rely on. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, he can call the Hudson Police to have the dog quieted. With the proposed fireworks ordinance, families that are negatively affected won't be afforded the same privilege that he has. Once again, this week, I would encourage you to lower the fine to the hundred and fifty-dollar area or use progressive fines, so more officers will write the tickets for fireworks. To be clear, I'm not against the pre-planned permitted display fireworks. It's the largest consumer fireworks, the mines, the shell devices, the reloadable tubes, and the multiple tube devices that cause the loudest explosions, and they're the ones that can be heard over three-quarters of a mile away, that, and they are the ones that generate the most calls for service for the police and cause the most problem for pets and people, including people just trying to get to sleep. They're the ones I and others can't escape the, the sound of their explosions. Once again, I ask that you please consider some ban on them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Goings. Uh, I believe Mr. Foyce, you have a presentation?
I do, from Jerry Thornsberry, seven oh four Sheridan Road. She was unable to make it this evening and asked I read her letter. Tonight, once again, I plead with you not to approve the change to the ordinance banning all fireworks in Waterloo. Last week, I heard some interesting comments from members of council and our police chief. I heard one of you say there were, there was virtually no difference in the number of fireworks actually exploding between year one and year two. That is not my experience. And since apparently the city does not have an accurate count of the number of complaints, because allegedly all complaints were not logged, I decided to ask my neighbors how they experienced the volume of fireworks from, from when it was legal and the second year when they were banned. Each and every neighbor stated that year two was, was tolerable. Barely any disturbance from the lawbreakers, so the ban is working. To abandon it after one year seems irresponsible to me and my neighbors. Next, I heard one council member say that we citizens should take up this issue with our state representatives for opening this Pandora's Box for us in Waterloo. Yes, citizens do need to contact their state-elected representatives. However, each of you took an oath to protect the health and safety of Waterloo citizens. Your actions to allow fireworks that disturbs and distresses many different cohorts of Waterloo residents is dumbfounding, especially when the state legislature allowed local communities the option of limiting or banning these fireworks. Do your duty to all citizens and do not lift the ban. Next, our police chief responded that police officers do in fact find it very difficult to issue tickets to those people breaking the law. This comment is especially maddening when I witnessed an off-duty officer teaching a child how to light off a string of firecrackers on the fourth. If our police officers cannot even follow this law, I suggest we have bigger troubles in the city than most citizens even know. Again, I, again, I plead with you not to lift the ban on fireworks. The reasons for passing, passing the ordinance banning essentially a missile loaded with variation of gunpowder have not changed. People suffering from PTSD symptoms will still suffer. Disabled citizens will still suffer. People who have experienced family tragedy through gun violence will still suffer. Citizens young and old with severe health problems will still suffer. Unable to get to sleep because of loud noises, children will still suffer. Our pets will still suffer in two ways, the noise and the sedation medication. Further, every citizen will now be exposed to potential property damage. Today, most of us live in established neighborhoods with our houses built about twenty feet apart from each other. What about property damage to a neighbor's roof or landscaping? I'm dumbfounded that this council may consider this potential compromise, which gives permission for one neighbor to potentially harm another's property. Is it okay to disrupt the peace and tranquility of other citizens using the rationale that those who bought these fireworks should be allowed to fire them? Do dollars spent by individuals matter more than the distress incurred by all other citizens because of their personal decision to buy a product? This is not commerce, this is coercion. Let's encourage building our community by inviting all citizens to witness the organized display of fireworks. Please do your duty to all citizens of Waterloo. Do not change the ordinance banning fireworks. Or alternatively, vote no on the current ordinance change and bring forth a new ordinance change that restricts fireworks to only our Independence Day, July Fourth. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Uh, yes. Uh, Justin Bartlett, I am, uh, one of, uh, the business partners at Crossroads Fireworks, twenty nineteen Crossroads Boulevard. And, uh, I've got, wanted to say thank you for considering this. Uh, I'm here to speak in favor of this ordinance. And I do want to be clear that I'm not minimizing the negative experience anybody is having with fireworks. I understand it's real, and it's negative for those people. I, I, I acknowledge that, and that's true. Um, and I would also say that there's no such thing as a perfect ordinance that you're going to pass here. A ban's not perfect, a short period's not perfect, a long period's not perfect. I don't think there is such a thing as a perfect ordinance that's going to please everyone. Um, but, uh, one of the reasons that I favor this is that, uh, we believe that allowing a few days for use, uh, we think is actually better for the people who have the negative experience because of doing a better job of limiting, uh, that use to those three days. There will be, most people want to obey the law, and so we believe most people who set off fireworks are going to do it in those three days. But it's also just true that there are some people who are scofflaws. It's true that, uh, if you don't allow those three days, you're going to have more of those people just kind of scattered out whenever they decide to do it. Um, uh, because if they decide to break the law, then it doesn't matter. You know, the fine's the same whichever day it is. And so we, we believe and hope that, uh, allowing a few days will actually do a better job of containing those very real issues. Uh, our other, our other store is located in Bettendorf in Quad Cities. And, uh, Bettendorf allows, the Quad Cities allows a few days of use, and I was down there. I ran that store this past summer. And, uh, my experience and my, of seeing what happened down there is it seemed like it did a good job of containing that use to those couple of days. Um, no, every city is different. I can't, you know, promise anything, but, but it seemed like it did a good job there, and it did a good job there to the point that, uh, they don't seem to be seeing much in the way of backlash, much in the way of argument. It seems like that's going to be a stable solution in the Quad Cities. Um, no, you know, as sellers, uh, obviously, we would love to see a longer period. We'd love to see something that included the weekend before, the weekend after, those kinds of things. Um, but we believe this is a reasonable compromise, um, and we believe it's a good, a good, uh, solution. And I would also note, um, that, uh, Channel Seven did a poll on Facebook. It's the closest thing we have. We don't have, you know, real polling data, but the closest thing that we've seen is Channel Seven did a poll, and had about twelve hundred respondents, um, through Facebook, and it was seventy-one percent in favor and twenty-nine percent against, uh, allowing a few days of use. So, thank you.
Thank you. He gave his business address at Cross.
Yes, thank you. Todd Obadall, one twenty-four Amity Drive. Um, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Goings', uh, presentation and, uh, Mrs. Thornsberry's letter. I appreciate Mr. Bartlett coming up to speak as well, and I think, uh, he, he said explicitly, um, why the people that are selling fireworks want the larger window. It creates more sales. That is the bottom line. That is why they're asking for the increased window. I believe this council needs to listen to the citizens of Waterloo and the concerns of the citizens of Waterloo and not put outside business interests on top of the concerns of our citizens. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this item? Counsel? Yes, ma'am.
I'm really conflicted on this issue. Um, personally, I am against the fireworks. Um, but I was elected to represent all the citizens in Waterloo, and I take that responsibility seriously. I should mention that the only people that have contacted me personally have been against fireworks. Um, but I did become aware of the, uh, the polling that went on on Facebook through KWWL, and so I have to take that seriously as well, although you could question whether those were all Waterloo citizens. You, you just don't know. So what I'm asking is I'm going to continue to vote against this, but if there are people out there, um, that are really in favor of this, might be opening the floodgates, but I would really welcome them letting me know either by email or phone call. And if there is a, a large group of people that feel passionately about this, I will certainly reconsider. I also believe that if you do believe in fireworks and really want to celebrate our nation's birthday, there are many organized events that you can go to. And shooting them off in your backyard, as many of my neighbors do, resulting in, in loud noises, an upset dog, uh, and a lot of trash in my yard is not something I, I really support. But again, if there are a lot of people in this community that do, I will certainly reconsider.
All right. Yes, sir.
So, I agree with you, Councilperson John. It, it is a conflicting situation. I personally, um, I'm not going to be purchasing fireworks. I have never purchased fireworks, but I too, um, was elected by the Ward Five residents to represent all of them, and I have heard from both sides, including, uh, Mrs. Thornsberry today, and, um, you know, talking to her. I think it's important that, you know, I, I've been monitoring social media. I, I've been doing those kinds of things, um, and I appreciate, you know, what Mr. Schmidt said last week about state legislature, and the fact that they've, you know, foisted upon us, uh, something that we have to kind of regulate, and I think, um, the three-day window currently, uh, I believe gives us the best option at compromise. And it's not an easy situation to do. And, you know, I'm of the same mindset that if people really are adamant about it one way or the other, I know my phone number, I know my city email, I know my home address. I've all been out on social media. And I'm just waiting for those people to call. And I've, I got two emails from neighbors of Mrs. Thornsberry today. I told her, I said, if you are adamant and your neighbors are adamant, she, you know, she said they just don't feel they're going to be heard. And I said, well, if I don't hear them, then I'm going to, I'm going to work towards compromise. So if I hear overwhelmingly one way or the other, I think it's important. I think this is a perfect opportunity for citizens of Waterloo to be engaged in something. And I think that we have to, as council people, take that. I have heard from both sides. I'm just going to reiterate that. People, and people understand that there are things that they don't want. They don't feel a ban is the most, is the best solution. And I don't know, you know, if we look at, if we take suggestions and vote this down, you know, at some point, and we do the one day, that may be, again, on us from the, from the state. So we may have to face that as well. But again, I want to reiterate, if you are passionate one way or the other, let us know, because this is a great opportunity for our citizens to be engaged. Thank you.
Did you say it was the legislature foisted upon us?
I did. You know, I was trying to, you know, trying to, little lightheartedness, so. Little lightheartedness. I know.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I have not received a lot of people getting in contact with me from a standpoint of being for the fireworks. I think I've had three emails of individuals who are against it. So realistically, I cannot say that I've got people pounding my door down saying that they are in favor of it. But one of the things that does give me an indication that there are people in favor of shooting off fireworks is the fact that they are shooting them off on the Fourth of July, even when it is illegal. So for me, once again, I have to look at it from a standpoint of, I have constituents out there who want it and those who don't. And I represent everyone, so my vote will be in the affirmative.
All right, thank you. Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add that there are other things of this that are unspoken. And that is that the ban does continue for Christmas, New Year's Eve. We have not changed that at all. This is only allowing three days' use during and around our National Independence Holiday. Next thing is that this, the amendments in here are sort of multifaceted in that they deal not just with the days, but they also deal with the zoning, which has been approved this evening, and restricting that, which gets to the heart of home rule and our city making a decision that the state is not going to tell us how we fashion our ordinances on where we want things sold within the City of Waterloo. The next thing is that it does raise the fine as a deterrent to 375, but it can go higher than that, as we discussed last week. And lastly, it includes a statement about the use of the Police Department for Enforcement purposes, including the use of the nuisance part of our city ordinances. So it goes beyond actually catching somebody in the act to designating a property and addressing the property owner at that time. And then finally, I'd just like to add that in G, we don't have crossed out this week, but I'm sure that the clerk will probably confirm this, is that we eliminated that last sentence last week. Mr. Mayor.
Right, there were amendments last week. I just want to note, too, off of what Mr. Morrissey said, there are, there is a separate section of the city code that talks about deeming properties who shoot off 20 fireworks as a nuisance. That's not included in this ordinance change. That's in a separate part of the code. So I just want to clarify that for everybody.
Mr. Mayor? First, I would like to address the fine, the so-called fine. To my knowledge, and I think I found out today, maybe one ticket was issued in the two years that we've had them fired off illegally. So this raising of fines, that is such a joke. We should just make the fine a million dollars because we really have no intention of ever collecting any. I just think that is ridiculous. But I also think that for my ward, it's overwhelmingly a response to me directly. When I'm out and about, I've had people stop me and thank me. I have had people from other wards email me and leave text messages for me thanking me for supporting a ban, a total ban on fireworks. I think right now with the snow falling, people just aren't thinking about this. But look out come July. Our phones are going to ring off the hook. And we will have people down here asking how this happened. Because truthfully, people don't pay close attention in February. They just don't. And when I saw the people step up to the microphone last week, only one of them was in support of it, and he sells them, and he doesn't even live here. So it's not going to be his baby that gets woken up. It's not going to be his autistic child, if he, you know, if he were to happen to have that condition in his house, that is bothered by this. It is not his pet that's going to be, he lives in Hudson. You know, I, I don't want people who live in other towns to determine for our wards what is best, what environment they want for their lives. Our windows are open. We have organized fireworks that are spectacular, beginning and not limited to the mayor's fireworks. I just see this as an opportunity for kids to get injured. You know, kids are running around with them and not closely supervised with them. I think we were only waiting for that to happen. I thought that it was down last year. The noise in my neighborhood was definitely down. It did occur, but it was not as bad as the first year. So I will be voting again against this.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, suspend the rules?
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
All right, thank you. Number 10, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time, an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by adding new subsections C, D, and E to Title VIII, Chapter 4, Section 7, Establishment of Stormwater Using Fees.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Any questions or comments about this item?
David Driver, 3145 West Forest Street. I have requested a detailed breakdown on the expenses for the $1.7 million annual income to identify where this money has gone. I hope to see that report soon. I encourage the council members to push for not passing this for the third time, as well as what, over the next 10 years, for a breakdown I got, what are the expenses for that? And my basis on that is that according to last council meeting, council meeting before, on the 1.7, it was talked about that .400,000 dollars went towards actually doing a project. One of the things that was mentioned was that we, employees and street sweepers and all that, before this was initiated 10 years ago, we had street sweepers and employees. So I don't understand why more than 400,000 dollars didn't go towards achieving a accomplishment of a mandate that we have from the EPA. We have 10 years to do it. We're in an EPA mandate now. We didn't do anything but 400,000 dollars a year for the last 10 years. That's $4 million. But you take 1.3 times 10, you know, not good with math. But that's a lot of money that got towards expenses that were already on our budgets before that. So we, all of a sudden, have to shift that all over to the new mandate we got 10 years ago? Doesn't make sense, economic or mathematic sense to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else with comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive. Over the last couple of weeks, we learned of a situation out at Regent's Bank where we had water that was used and $20,000 sewer bill was accumulated, and that was forgiven. The owners of the bank building, they recognized what had happened because their meter had been spinning to an excessive degree. So we know that that break came after the meter, which is the responsibility of the property holder. But the $20,000 was decided to be forgiven because it is city policy that if that water didn't go into the sewer system, that they shouldn't be charged a sewer fee for that. They shouldn't be charged to process that. Councilman Morrissey has brought up a very pertinent angle to this, that we are assessing sewer fees onto people that don't use sewers